I'd like to call to order the October 16, 2012 meeting of the Planning Board of the Town of Cape Elizabeth. The first item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting, June 19, 2012. Does anyone have any questions or comments on the minutes?
Make a motion to approve?
Please.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, that's unanimous, thank you. The first substantive item is a consent agenda item, Golden Ridge subdivision approval extension request. Because this is a consent agenda item, we do not have any discussion of the item. If anyone feels that the item needs discussion, we will have to move it off of the consent agenda. Golden Ridge LLC is requesting a 90-day extension of the approval previously granted by the planning board in accordance with Section 1624F of the subdivision ordinance. Can the applicant make a presentation, or should we not do that?
The applicant is here to answer questions. If you have questions for him.
Okay, and if we have questions, we then would need to move it off of this agenda?
Just to, you know, have a conversation with him. Yeah, you can just do that.
Does anyone have any questions for the applicant? Would anyone like to make a motion? Henry?
Be it ordered that based on the plans and the three or submitted and the facts presented, the request of Golden Ridge Lane LLC for a 90-day extension of the subdivision approval of the Golden Ridge subdivision located at the end of Golden Ridge Lane is granted with a new expiration date on January 14, 2013.
You have a second?
Second.
I think Carol said it first, okay. Any discussion of the motion? All in favor? That is unanimous, thank you. The next item on the agenda, Rudy's Site Plan Amendment. 517 Ocean House LLC is requesting an amendment to the previously approved site plan to add a basement and convert the second floor storage base to an apartment, Section 1996, Site Plan Amendment. And I would add also to, is requesting a one-year extension of the site plan approval. So if you would like to introduce yourself and explain-
Sure. My name is Patrick Carroll, I'm with Carroll Associates, and I'm here tonight representing Paul Woods and 517 Ocean House LLC. I know back in December, we received our site plan approval from the board, and since then, we've been working pretty diligently on refining the site plan, refining the building plans, and getting ready to kind of break ground and start construction on the new Rudy's. As a result of kind of refining of the building plans itself, we've, we came to the conclusion that, originally, if you remember back, the, there was a, there's a first floor with the 80 seats, there was a second floor that was going to contain an office and some storage. And we started looking at, looking at how that was really going to work, and determined that if we could add a basement to the project, basement to the plan, that we could accommodate the, the storage requirements for the restaurant much easier and cleaner than, than the upstairs. And that freed up the upstairs for another use. And so, we, we are now proposing to take the basement, or take the, the building footprint, add a basement to the lower level, and add, and add the, add a apartment to the upper floor. So, that's why we're here tonight, is basically, it's kind of a minor change in use from what was originally approved. Originally, it was just a, a 80-seat restaurant with upstairs, storage, and office. Now, it's an 80-seat restaurant with a small bedroom apartment on the second floor. The site plan is essentially the same. We did have to raise the grades and adjust the grades one foot in order to accommodate the, the basement, in order to get drainage out of the basement, foundation drains and so forth. So, we had to raise the building a foot. The site has been slightly graded to accommodate that foot and grade change. However, all the grading is back down to where it was at the approved level by the time it gets to, to the property line. So, we're not expanding or creating grading beyond what was originally approved, and all the grading fits within the, the property boundaries themselves. So, I'd be glad to go through that with you if you'd like. We do have, let me see if I can- Get to, maybe I can't. last time, too. The original, the original footprint, the original proposed plan, had a finished floor elevation of 75, and we have raised that to, to 76 here. So, the finished floor now is at 76. There's a basement floor that's at down at elevation 67, so it's a nine-foot floor-to-floor relationship. That gives us an eight-foot ceiling in there. The basement is really proposed, that's where the coolers are going to be, storage for, you know, condiments and napkins, and those types of elements would all be down in the, in the basement area. There is a direct access from the, from the service area here into a stairwell that drops right down into the basement level. The access for the upstairs apartment actually occurs, there's a sidewalk that comes in here, and there's a doorway on the north side of the building that runs into a stair that overlaps the stair going to the basement. This goes up to the second floor. But again, all of the grades themselves have been adjusted such that the grading does not encroach beyond what was originally approved. The parking, we're, we're keeping the same number of parking spaces. We're anticipating that, you know, we, we exceed the ordinance requirement for parking, and we anticipate that the parking for the apartment would be a shared use with the restaurant parking. So, we don't see an issue with, with parking. The landscape plan was just barely modified. It was modified primarily in this zone right here, this little landscape area here. Had to be modified in order to, to, when we raised the grade, we had to bring a ramp into here in order to, to make this accessible by ADA requirements. So, we, this, this area in here was slightly tweaked. We've adjusted kind of a number of shrubs in here and created a sidewalk that comes up this way, kind of ramping up to the, to the doorway. That's the only change in the, in the landscape plan. We submitted here, this is, this is the basement level of the building, and you can see it's, it's primarily just a wide-open space. You can see the stairwell on the right-hand side that comes down from, from the service area in the back comes down. It's, it's not the entire footprint of the building. This is where there's a screen porch, a seasonal porch in the front, and this is kind of the, the arrival covered porch area for the, for the main entrance in. So, the basement area really comprises about, probably about 80% of the existing footprint. Again, the, the footprint that was approved hasn't been changed or modified. That square footage itself was, was maintained. So, we're not asking for an increase in size of the building, size of the footprint. Is that the furnace?
I hope so.
We'd be worried. It would be better than an earthquake.
Maybe we should check and see.
Who's going? Is it gas or oil?
It's what? Is it gas or oil? Oh, and should we check with the fire department and have someone take a look, just in case that was the furnace and not an earthquake? What about if you put a call into the fire department, just in case? Thank you.
So, this is, this is the first floor plan here. So, it shows a series of, this is the entrance off of Route 80, Route 77, I'm sorry, here. This is the, the other primary entrance from the parking lot is here. This is all a covered kind of porch area where waiting and so forth could occur, queuing. So, you come in, there's a, there's a seasonal porch here, and then this is the kind of the, the main dining area, a series of booths, a series of tables. This is the bar area with a series of stools. So, there's a total of 80 seats in the restaurant here. This is the door to the service area. This is where service trucks will back up in here, and this is where supplies will come into the kitchen area, or go straight down to the basement level. And then on the outside, this is the door that goes up to the upstairs apartment.
Let you finish there. Before you finish, can you explain the one-year extension request?
Well, the one-year extension request is the fact that, that the current permit expires in December.
Right.
And Mr. Woods has all intentions to begin this project as soon as possible. I think we're looking at perhaps sometime around the first November, securing a demolition permit. And then, once the, once the building is down, then grading and, and prepping for the new building will occur. His concern is one of weather, and, you know, if we get into getting the building down and all of a sudden, November is just a really, really bad month, he may decide to kind of hold off until spring. So, given that the permit expires in December, that's just kind of cutting it too close. And the thought was that, and we talked to Maureen, and she suggested that, that a one-year extension would be appropriate.
Okay. Now, we are going to open the floor to public comment, but before we do that, does anyone have questions? Clarify, questions?
Just have a simple one. Where's the ground, where is the water table in respect to the basement? How high up is the water table? Is it below the basement, halfway up the basement?
We're not sure, but, you know, we have, we have, Skip Murray is going, is hired as the site contractor. Skip has taken a look at the site. He feels pretty confident that, that he can, we can put a basement in here. And Skip's done a lot of work all over town for years and years. I know there is an adjacent wetland off to the south, and our foundation drains, our basement is actually higher than any, any of the wetland areas that are mapped on the, on that adjacent property.
Sorry. In the Broad Cove area, a couple of years ago, almost every house down there, their basements were flooded. And so, you know, I would have thought that, that maybe we'd know where the water table was.
So, again, we do have proposed foundation drains that will, that will drain, positively drain out to the south, and we believe they're, they're draining and they're daylighting at an elevation higher than what the, what the wetland elevation is. So, you know, without, without digging a 10-foot test pit out there, it's, it's rather difficult at this point to tell.
If you're storing provisions down there and it gets damp, I mean, I was just, just wondering what the, what the depth of the water table was.
Any other questions? I think our first decision is whether we have adequate information tonight, but we, questions may help.
Is the adjacent building also going to have a basement?
The adjacent building is part of Phase Two, and that really hasn't been designed yet.
Okay.
You know, right now, I mean, I think the way that both buildings were originally approved, they're both approved as a slab-on-grade, so I guess until that building gets designed and ready to be built, you know, I, I can't really anticipate what it's going to be.
Okay, and then, is there any thought of putting a bulkhead into the building, or is the, are you going to just have that one access?
I think right now, we've, we've looked at codes, and we don't need a secondary access out of the basement for, to meet code. We did look originally at putting a bulkhead in, and the feeling was that the access in and through the kitchen to the basement was, functioned much better from the restaurant point of view. And so, that's kind of why we went with that. So, there's no, there's no design right now to put a bulkhead, a separate bulkhead in.
Can you comment on the town engineer's two comments? Potential for ponding in front of the building?
Yeah.
And then the difference between the two buildings?
I think both of those are really a result of just some, some typos in, in our grading plan. I think they were, the spot elevation that was shown there was based on when the, when the building was a foot lower. It wasn't really caught. And so, when we raised it up, that spot elevation naturally ended up being lower than what everything around it was. And so, that's what he was picking up on. And the same thing between the buildings. You know, we, we fully anticipate to take another look at that and add some spot grades in there to make sure that we've got good drainage.
Anyone else have preliminary questions, comments? I, I only had one. Because of the zone we're in here, we do take a look at the exterior of the building as part of our site plan approval. Is there any change, other than the raising of the elevation, any other exterior changes in design, or are there additional windows, anything else that's happening?
No, and, you know, we did originally propose to submit those, those elevation drawings to the town, and in discussions with Maureen, she felt like there were, weren't enough changes to those. I mean, they're just refinements, basically, but the basic elevations that were approved are being kind of just refined and tweaked, and, I mean, that's, that's really the massing and the materials and the fenestration and all of that is, is very consistent with what-
Is the same as what we had previously seen.
Yes. So, she didn't feel like we needed to submit those, and that's why they weren't part of your package.
At this point, if there's any member of the public that would like to comment, please come forward. We have received a couple of emails from neighbors, and we've all read those, but if anyone else has comments, please feel free to come forward to vote you. Seeing no one, public comment period is closed, and I'll open it back up to Planning Board members for any further questions, comments. Victoria?
Just a comment. When I was looking at the plans, I noticed that number four on the first page, one, it still reads about outdoor dining for a total, I mean, it still reads the old way. So, when you do update this, it should probably be updated as condition number seven from our December meeting. And I forgot to bring it with me, but it says something to the effect of the proposed use for Phase One is a, well, now it's going to be an apartment and an 80-seat restaurant, and the proposed use for Phase Two is a village retail shop. But that was, so it's number four here on this page, number one. If you go back to look at condition number seven from our meeting, you'll see that as a condition, the wording was supposed to be updated. So, when you go back-
Okay. I think I did update this, but I didn't look back at that condition, because we weren't trying to meet all the conditions with this plan yet. That's really the next step in submitting everything for building permits, is to make sure all those conditions are met. But we did update that to include the rental apartment in there.
Yes, I saw that.
But I, I understand where you're coming from, and I appreciate that comment.
Just FYI. Thank you.
Anybody else? Do I understand you that you're not going to have a designated parking space for the tenant? Is the tenant going to have a space that they can rely on remaining available should they come home late at night? That is something that-
Yeah, it hasn't been discussed, but, you know, that, that could be accommodated pretty easily. Again, I think, you know, we're, we're at 39 spaces and the zoning requirement is for 31, so, I mean, clearly, we could designate a space for, for the tenant.
I'm just, based on the neighbors' comments that we had at prior meetings about, you know, the expectation and that this is going to be pretty full, I would think that if we were having a residential tenant coming home late, and we're, we need to accommodate them in this lot, I think we should have a designated space. Anybody else have thoughts on that?
I don't agree.
You don't agree?
No. I think that's something that the tenant could negotiate with the landlord if it's a problem, but I think it's more efficient if people just pool the spaces for joint use. From an operational perspective, makes more sense.
Anyone else?
To pool inventory, random demand.
I guess my concern is that, usage-wise, we need to conclude that there's adequate parking for the combined use. And I'm concerned that a tenant coming home late on a Saturday night will not have parking. And, and to me, that's not a landlord-tenant issue, that's a planning issue.
I, I think that there's, in our ordinance, the concept of pooled parking, and-
Right.
There's sort of an efficiency reason behind that.
But there's also a requirement-
Fits into that.
That there is parking for the residential use. I don't know, Maureen, do you have a thought on that?
On parking?
Yeah. No, my concern was that, given the expectation that particularly on high-use times, this parking lot will be completely full, it seemed to me that the tenant should have a space, otherwise, it was not be unlikely that a tenant would come home during a busy restaurant time and not have a place to park.
I believe that there's 25 spaces on the property?
Thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine parking spaces for an 80-seat restaurant, which would mean that the, the parking requirement in your ordinance is 20 spaces. So, even if there isn't shared parking with the apartment, that means that the total required parking would be 22 spaces, plus the parking for the Phase Two building. So, the applicant still has enough parking for the whole project without going with the shared parking. And remember, some of that 39 spaces was for the Phase Two building.
Right.
And that is a building that we would expect would be more of an office space building that would be closed nights and weekends when it could share parking with the apartment.
So, when we compare the total required, which is 51?
Thirty-one, 31 required. And again, that's for both buildings, both phases.
Yeah, okay. So, your sense is that we shouldn't designate a residential space, or that we don't have the authority to do?
No, I, I mean, we've, the Planning Board has, has gone through this issue several times on several different lots, and you have repeatedly approved shared parking, and we have yet to have a problem in those situations. So, you know, I think if you were even to designate one space that's supposed to be a resident-only space, it wouldn't be something you would need to do. Every time you've approved shared parking with residents and business, we've never had someone come back and say, "Oh, I couldn't get into my parking space," or, if you're trying to do shared parking, your, the whole idea is to pool, pool your, your resources and so you can use them more efficiently rather than paving more space. So, why set aside a space just for a resident that may only need it on nights and weekends?
Because the neighbors, because a resident has no choice but to put their car here.
No, the, the resident has a, resident can put their car on the street, just like anyone else could put their car on the street.
Right, but the neighbors were quite concerned about-
Yep.
Cars on the street, so it seemed to me that as a planning matter, we would want to make sure that a resident who has to be there, as opposed to a patron, would have a space to park. But if others don't agree, that's fine.
I don't feel strongly one way or the other.
Okay, no comment? We'll let you decide it as you wish.
Okay.
Should we make a motion? Make a motion.
Okay. The Planning Board granted the following approval at the December 20, 2011 meeting. Is that, am I reading the right thing? Therefore, be it ordered that, based on the plans and materials submitted and the facts presented, the application of 517 Ocean House Road LLC for site plan review and a resource protection permit to construct an 80-seat restaurant and a second 1,240-square-foot retail building, including 2,502 square feet of wetland alteration to construct a sidewalk in the Business A District located at 517 Ocean House Road be approved, subject to the following conditions. The main building was proposed for construction on a slab. The second-floor space was designated as storage. The applicant is now proposing to construct a basement for the building and to use the second-floor space as an apartment. No footprint changes are proposed. The basement will raise the building one foot, resulting in adjustments to the site grading. The new grading will not change the grades at the property line that were originally approved. Site plan approval is valid for one year and will expire this December. The applicant is also requesting a one-year extension of the site plan approval. Motion for the board to consider. Be it ordered that, based on the plans and materials submitted and the facts presented, the application of 517 Ocean House Road LLC for an amendment to the previously approved Rudy's of the Cape site plan to add a basement, change the use of the second floor from storage to an apartment, and related grade changes-
parking would be 22 spaces, plus the parking for the Phase Two building. So the applicant still has enough parking for the whole project without going with the shared parking. And remember, some of that 39 spaces was for the Phase Two building.
Right.
And that is a building that we would expect would be more of an office space building that would be closed nights and weekends when it could share parking with the apartment.
So when we compare the total required, which is 51...
Thirty-one, 31 required, and again, that's for both buildings, both phases.
Yeah, okay. So your sense is that we shouldn't designate a residential space, or that we don't have the authority to do that?
No, I, I mean, we've, the planning board has, has gone through this issue several times on several different lots, and you have repeatedly approved shared parking, and we have yet to have a problem in those situations. So, you know, I think if you were even to designate one space that's supposed to be a resident-only space, it wouldn't be something you would need to do. Every time you've approved shared parking with residents and business, we've never had someone come back and say, "Oh, I couldn't get into my parking space," or... If you're trying to do shared parking, your, the whole idea is to pool, pool your, your resources, and so you can use them more efficiently rather than having more space. So why set aside a space just for a resident that may only need it on nights and weekends?
Because the neighbors, because a resident has no choice but to put their car here.
No, the, the resident has, resident can put their car on the street, just like anyone else could put their car on the street.
Right, but the neighbors were quite concerned about-
Yep.
Cars on the street, so it seemed to me that as a planning matter, we would want to make sure that a resident who has to be there, as opposed to a patron, would have a space to park. But if others don't agree, that's fine.
I don't feel strongly one way or the other.
Okay, no comment? We'll let you decide it as you wish.
Okay.
Should we make a motion?
Make a motion.
Okay. The planning board granted the following approval at the December 20, 2011 meeting. Is that, am I reading the right thing? Therefore, be it ordered that, based on the plans and materials submitted and the facts presented, the application of 517 Ocean House Road LLC for site plan review and a resource protection permit to construct an 80-seat restaurant and a second 1,240-square-foot retail building, including 2,502 square feet of wetland alteration to construct a sidewalk in the Business A District located at 517 Ocean House Road be approved, subject to the following conditions. The main building was proposed for construction on a slab. The second-floor space was designated as storage. The applicant is now proposing to construct a basement for the building and to use the second-floor space as an apartment. No footprint changes are proposed. The basement will raise the building one foot, resulting in adjustments to the site grading. The new grading will not change the grades of the property line that were originally approved. Site plan approval is valid for one year and will expire this December. The applicant is also requesting a one-year extension of the site plan approval. Motion for the board to consider. Be it ordered that, based on the plans and materials submitted and the facts presented, the application of 517 Ocean House Road LLC for an amendment to the previously approved Rudy's of the Cape site plan to add a basement, change the use of the second floor from storage to an apartment and related grade changes, and the extension of one year of the original approval plus amendments for a new expiration date of October 16, 2013 be approved, subject to the following conditions. One, that the plans be revised for the town engineer's comments dated October 10, 2012, and two, that the conditions of the original approval are still applicable.
So... Any further comment? Victoria, did you want to add anything there?
Do I need to make a formal add for the condition that was not met in December, that the applicant says he's still updating, condition number seven about changing the wording? With that? In my opinion, there are several conditions from the original approval that haven't been met yet, and so those have to be met, plus anything tonight. And that's why I am recommending that condition number two, so it's made crystal clear that all the original conditions still have to be complied with.
Okay, and that's all. Great. Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Unanimous, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And Maureen, can you explain what the rumble was?
Well, we are very fortunate tonight to have in the audience Public Works Director Robert Malli, who exercised all his connections and contacted the Portland Dispatch Office, where they reported they had received about 400 calls regarding an earthquake.
Ah, okay. So we had an earthquake. Thank you.
It'll be on the news today.
Wow.
It hit eight, and it was 4.5 miles west of Sebago.
Hit eight?
Oh, wow.
Eight on the Richter scale and 4.5 miles west of Sebago, for anyone who's listening
at home.
Yeah, and it's south of Los Angeles.
And we hope you're all okay, and your houses are all okay. The Town Hall seems to be fine, so we're going to move on to the next item on our agenda, which is the Fort Williams Park site improvements for 2012. The Town of Cape Elizabeth is requesting review of four areas of site improvements implementing the master plan, specifically expansion of Ship Cove parking, upgrade of the Ship Cove picnic area slab, vehicular improvements at the intersection of Ocean Road and Wheatley Road, and vehicular and pedestrian improvements at the intersection of Powers Road and Ship Cove parking lot entrance drive and Ocean Road. Section 199 site plan review completeness.
Thank you. My name is John Mitchell, Mitchell and Associates, and I represent the Town of Cape Elizabeth for the Fort Williams Park Site Improvement Project. If you remember from the workshop meeting, the recently approved Fort Williams Park Master Plan update contained a list of 10 priority items. The Town Council has approved four of those 10 priority items, or approved funding to design and construct for the priority items. This is a plan that illustrates the, roughly the project area. It extends from Chapel Road, which is the road that accesses the Garden Mansion, all the way over to where the loop is on the main access road. The Cliffside Arboretum is located here, and this is called Wheatley Road, which is the road that accesses or provides access to the overflow parking up on, above the bleachers. So this, this is the, the project area. It also consists of the picnic shelter down at Ship Cove. So I just wanted to highlight the, some of the, the main features of the priority items. Priority one is to expand the parking lot at Ship Cove, improve vehicular circulation with a turnaround, improve pedestrian circulation. Priority two is to replace the concrete slab at the picnic shelter, incorporate a safety handrail, remove miscellaneous concrete, and stabilize some ongoing erosion. Priority five is at the Ocean Road and Wheatley Road intersection, and we're going to realign Wheatley Road at the intersection and improve site drainage. And the last priority, priority seven, is located at the Powers Road intersection, where it intersects the parking lot entrance, and we're going to redefine the vehicular circulation at this intersection and incorporate some plantings. So beginning with priority one, this is the existing Ship Cove parking lot. The, the ocean, or the, the high-water line is located here, and the picnic shelter is located here. So what, the proposal is to expand the Ship Cove parking lot, and the design calls for a, a circular cul-de-sac design with a grass island in the middle and parking around the perimeter of the cul-de-sac. We have added an additional 25 parking spaces in this design for a total of 72 spaces. The design also includes several pedestrian improvements. One, and I believe this is one that the board asked us to look at, is to provide a, a paved walkway that runs parallel with the existing parking lot. So we have done that, and it is separated, as you can see, from the edge of the pavement with the grass esplanade. The second walkway is to provide a handicap-accessible walkway that leads from the parking lot to the picnic area. And then we've also sort of enhanced or redefined the pedestrian circulation leading from the parking area up to Chapel Road. As you know, there's a, there's quite a bit of pavement in this area. It dates back to the military, when this, this area was designed for vehicular circulation. So we've designed a, a five-foot-wide pedestrian walkway here, and an eight-foot-wide pedestrian walkway that will allow for emergency vehicles on that side. We've also done some drainage improvements in the area. Right now, the, the drainage, basically, in this grass area sheet flows towards Ship Cove and into the ocean. We have incorporated two catch basins, one here and one here, that will pick up the majority of the runoff from the pavement. The pipe will connect to an existing catch basin located here, and then there's an outlet pipe that flows to this, out into the Ship Cove. And, and again, as we discussed at the workshop meeting, these catch basins will have two-foot-deep sumps in them that will allow the sediments to settle, and those are cleaned out periodically. So we're, we're capturing a lot of the sediments from the, the paved surface before it goes into the ocean. Oh, I'm sorry. Priority two is the picnic area, and what we're going to do here is to replace the concrete slab, which is terribly cracked, and to replace it with a new slab. We're going to remove a lot of miscellaneous concrete in this area here and replace it with lawn area. We're also going to provide a handrail, a safety handrail, along the picnic area where there is a, a drop-off from the slab. And then finally, we're going to, we're going to stabilize some erosion, some ongoing erosion that is occurring along Keys Road. Priority five is to basically realign this intersection of Wheatley Road. Currently, it comes out in this, in a very, you know, acute angle to the main access road. It's difficult for vehicles to, to enter while there's a, a vehicle exiting. So we're going to realign it so that the Wheatley Road comes in at a 90 degrees to the main access road, and basically, it's just a relocation of approximately 150 feet of 18-foot-wide roadway, and it will blend into the existing roadway at this point here. In addition, we're going to build a small retaining wall, a stone retaining wall in this location, in a short section on this location. And we're also going to improve some of the drainage in this area. We've located a catch basin here, which will capture a lot of the runoff coming down Wheatley Road before it crosses Ocean Road. And this outlet pipe will connect to a, we're going to replace an existing catch basin structure here, and then the outlet pipe is going to outlet towards the ocean. And then, whoops, what happened? And then the final priority item is priority seven, which is the intersection of the Ship Cove parking lot entrance drive. And we're going to eliminate a lot of the excess pavement, primarily in this area here, and to, again, bring the access drive in at 90 degrees to the main road. There'll be other pedestrian improvements. We're going to widen the patriminus walk that runs parallel with the main access road. If you remember, there's a small stone wall, small retaining wall on, on the outer edge, and there'll be a curb along the roadway to help protect the pedestrians circulating from the parking lot up towards the arboretum area. We're also going to provide a couple crosswalks in this area and in this area, and there'll be some planting, some plantings done in, primarily in this planting area here. So those are, that's a, a quick overview of some of the site improvements that are being proposed.
Thank you. Our first issue is completeness. Do we have any questions before we open the floor for public comment?
Just one, if I may.
Yeah, Henry?
When I, when the workshop, I remember I, sorry, I thought that you'd made the parking, the circular parking lot, the roundry, we're going to put marking on there saying one-way. At the moment, it, it's either, if you look at it-
Yes.
It's not on that map.
Yes.
Further up there, the rotary part of the parking. Is that going to be one-way, or you can drive cars in both directions, clockwise?
Well, I, I remember discussing that. I'm, I'm not sure that we came to any final resolution. It is designed as a two-way. The, the aisle is 24 feet wide. You know, I'm, I'm not sure. I mean, I think that the natural flow is to, is to flow in a straight, rather than having to negotiate this turn, the natural flow is going to be-
Anti-clockwise, I would have thought, would have been the natural turnaround there, rather than that way, it was going to be, become straight down and around.
Right, that's the natural-
So it's anti-clockwise. But you haven't got an arrow, so people will be a bit confused, I'm sure, if you don't mark the road. But, I mean, it's everything else is for safety, I guess, what I would like to have seen, anyway.
Mm-hmm. Well, we'll, we'll consider that.
Anyone else? Okay, I'll now open the floor for public comment, if there are any members of the public who'd like to speak on this, the completeness of this application. Okay, anyone on the board have questions? If not, would someone like to make a motion for completeness?
Motion for the board to consider, be it ordered that, based on the plans and materials submitted and the facts presented, the application of the Town of Cape Elizabeth for site plan review of proposed improvements to Fort Williams Park, located offshore road, specifically items number one, two, five, and seven of the recently adopted Fort Williams Master Plan be deemed complete.
Do I have a second? Victoria, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Okay, so we can now begin discussion substantively, and we can also think about, as we ask questions, whether we want to have a site walk, if anyone feels a need for that. But let's go through any substantive questions that anyone might have.
I had one question. On, one of AMEX's comments was, the designer should consider adding handicap ramps at each of the crosswalk locations. I was confused by what that would mean exactly. I mean, aren't all those crosswalks handicapped accessible?
They are, and I believe that they, and we've added them. I mean, we, we've addressed all of these comments on these plans. We have added a handicap ramp here, here, and here.
When you say ramp, you mean a curb cut, like you show in your detail with the-
Yeah, I mean, we, we, we provided a curb cut. They're asking us to provide, I don't know if you've been down the Shore Road pathway at the handicap ramps, they provided a, it's a steel plate with protrusions. And I believe that that's what they're asking for, so we've, we've added that detail. Well, it's for the visually impaired.
And are you accepting all of AMEX's other recommendations? Some of them were requirements, and some of them were phrased as suggestions.
Yeah, these, I mean, you know, most of these comments are fairly minor in nature. I believe that we have agreed with all of the, the comments, whether they be suggestions or not.
Okay. What, consider adding additional accessible parking space under number six?
Oh, yes. On the Ship Cove parking area, the two handicap parking spaces that are located here are existing. Those, those currently exist today. We have added a third, a van-accessible space at the, the beginning of the, the existing parking lot. So we have a total of, a total of 72 parking spaces, three of which are handicapped.
Okay. And then I think there were just some, a couple of suggestions for more clearly drawing the plans.
Correct.
Anyone else have questions? Would anyone like to make a motion? I don't think we have. I may be missing a page. We do, okay, then I'm, I'm just missing the page. All right, would someone like to make a site? Uh, yes. First question is, we can do a site walk, in which case we would table this until after the site walk, or if we don't feel we need a site walk or have any more questions, we can go forward with a motion.
I don't think we need one, although I'd like a walk in the park.
Anybody else?
We need one.
Anyone think we need a site walk? Okay, good, then we're open for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion.
Victoria?
Motion for tabling and public-
Excuse me, could I make one comment before you make a motion? We did ask for a waiver on the stone water calculations. I don't know if you want to include that in your motion or not.
My, my comment would be that you've already deemed it complete, and the waiver's implied.
Okay.
All set?
Go ahead.
Motion for tabling and public hearing, be it ordered that, based on the plans and materials submitted and the facts presented, the application of the Town of Cape Elizabeth for site plan review of proposed improvements to Fort Williams Park, located offshore road, specifically items number one, two, five, and seven of the recently adopted Fort Williams Master Plan, be tabled to the regular November 20, 2012, meeting of the planning board, at which time a public hearing will be held.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do we need a public hearing? Maureen?
You're not required, excuse me. This is site plan review. You're not required to hold a public hearing for site plan review. But Fort Williams is near and dear to many people's hearts, and I think it's appropriate... It's prudent to provide an opportunity for people to comment.
Okay. I know we have in the past with Fort Williams items. Okay. So did we get a second? Joe, did you second?
Yeah.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you. Moving on to the next item on our agenda. Seize Gourmet Market Site Plan. KMC Properties is requesting a site plan review of a proposed mixed-use specialty market office building, 4,140 square feet, located at 349 Ocean House Road, Section 199, site plan completeness.
Excuse me, Elaine. Before you begin, I have to recuse myself from this one. I've had some business dealings with the applicant.
Okay. Thank you, Joe.
Do I have to...
No. You can...
If you feel like you can control yourself, you can step up there.
You need some more materials, John?
Yeah. We're just going to put up one.
Okay. Thank you.
Is that motion to take to the next meeting?
Apparently, I'm the only one that has it.
Page permission.
I can send it to you. Because it would have been in the email document. I'm guessing the page got stuck in the copier.
You might find it upstairs.
I don't think I got this. Thank you, Debbie. That's planner. On my list.
Thank you.
Go right ahead.
John Mitchell, and I represent Mike and Stephanie Concanon, who are here this evening, as well as Mark Mueller of Mark Mueller Architects for the proposed Seize Gourmet Market. The location of the proposed market is at 349 Ocean House Road. This is on the corner of the intersection of Ocean House Road and the high school driveway. This is the high school driveway. This is Ocean House Road. And this is the property. The property consists of a little over three-quarters of an acre. It was a former real estate business located... The building was located in this area here, access, and a small parking lot towards the rear. Abutis to the property include the high school, which is off to the west. There's a single-family residence located to the south, which is also in the Town Center Zone District, Ocean House Road, and the high school driveway. And the Community Services Building is located on the other side of the drive. It's in the Town Center District, which allows retail, restaurants, specialty markets, and offices. The... This is an existing conditions plan, as you can see by these symbols here. There are several hardwood trees, many of them which are run along the high school driveway, which are actually off of our property. But there's a concentration of hardwood trees in the north and east sections of the property. The property is relatively open, though, with very little understory. It slopes from the front to the rear. There's an average slope of 3% to 10%. And the site is well-serviced by existing public utilities. There is a water main in Ocean House. There's a sewer in the high school driveway area, as well as electric telephone and cable... Overhead electric telephone and cable utilities. I've got just a short series of site photographs. That wasn't supposed to be the first. Just to give you... To show you what the character of the property is. Well, the top photograph is the frontage along Ocean House Road. The lower photograph is the high school entrance drive. This is a view looking from Ocean House Road towards the high school. As you can see, there's an existing paved walkway that runs parallel with the drive. This is an area... This is taken from the inside of the site, looking towards the Community Services Building. And this is the location of where we're proposing a secondary access drive. This is a view looking towards the single-family residence. As you can see, there are several mature fir trees that are located actually on the abutis property that... But provide a very good screen. And there's also an existing six-foot-high stockade fence that runs along the property line. Another view looking towards Ocean House Road, there's a... Across the street, abutti. This is a winter scene, looking at the same property line. And finally, this is the rear property line, taken from the parking lot, looking towards the property. So the proposal is for a specialty market. It will be family-owned, and it will have a distinct menu with prepared foods to go, such as sandwiches, soups, baked goods, fresh salads, cheese, serve-yourself coffee area, to mention a few of the items. There will be a small area located... And Mark will get into more detail on the floor plan. But there'll be a small area with a few tables inside, as well as a small counter area for people who want to sit and have their lunch or their breakfast. Port Printing Solutions is a printing company that Mike Concanon owns. It's a non-retail printing company, and he intends to relocate his company to the second floor of the building sometime in the future. The building is a... It's a 3,000-square-foot footprint of a building. It's 1,500 square feet on the second story. The siding of the building is... Was situated in the northeast corner of the property or the portion of the property with the front of the building facing Ocean House Road. It will give a strong street presence to the building. The building has been designed with the service on the north end of the building and the patio space on the south side of the building. There are several access points into the building. One is obviously the main entrance in the front of the building. There's another one off of the service drive into the kitchen area. The main access door leading from the parking lot is located here. And there's another door leading out onto the patio on this side of the building, as well as a door that leads up to the second floor in this location. The patio space was a key element in the overall design of this facility. As I noted, it's on the south side of the building, and it's designed to allow seasonal outdoor eating area. It will accommodate four tables and chairs comfortably. The patio area will be... The circular patio area will be a small retaining wall that runs along the edge of the patio. The intention is to provide a lattice-style fence, which will run in the curvature of the patio, so that we can grow some nice-looking vines along that lattice-style fence. The main access... There are two access points. The main access is off Ocean House Road in this location, where the current access is. We have widened the access from 14 feet to 20 feet wide to allow a safer in-and-out access. The parking to the back. And then the secondary access is onto the high school driveway. Parking... There are 27 parking spaces that are required when you calculate all of the number of seats in the restaurant, the square footage, the number of employees in the office space. 27 spaces are required, and we're proposing 27. As far as utilities are concerned, we're bringing in public water off of Ocean House Road. We're bringing in sewer off of the high school driveway in this location here. And we're bringing underground electric telephone and cable from an existing utility pole right here, underground, to the building. There will be a propane tank, an underground propane tank, located on the service end of the building. Stormwater management. We've got a series of catch basins and storm drain piping that will collect the majority of the runoff from the property and direct it into the existing storm drain system, which is in the high school... On the high school property. One catch basin is located here, and another catch basin is located right here. So all of our runoff, or most of our runoff, will be connected to those two structures. The stormwater, from that point, runs down to... Through the high school property to a low area behind the swimming pool. And we've got a full stormwater management report in your booklet. Lighting. We have a series of seven light fixtures mainly around the parking area, and one at the entrance. These are LED 60-watt fixtures on 12-foot-high poles. There are also two Town Center light fixtures located in the esplanade along Ocean House Road. And one of the sheets in our set is a photometric plan that shows the level of foot candles throughout the property and along the property lines. Planting. We've got a number of deciduous flowering deciduous trees in the parking lot, along the entrance drive. We're preserving all of these trees. We have a screen of lilacs, which will help buffer both parking lots. We also have added additional plantings within this space here to help the buffering requirement. We have a dumpster located in this location here for easy access by the truck and to locate it in a location where it's furthest away from the residential property. And then finally, we have two easements that are being conveyed to the town. One is a sidewalk easement. It's a 15-foot-wide sidewalk easement running along Ocean House Road. This is to allow the public walkway to encroach onto our property. The second easement is an access and utility easement, which will consist of this area here. This will allow the two-way access from our property onto town property, as well as bringing utilities from this location onto our property. So we have a grading drainage and utilities plan. We have... This is a copy, a rendered copy of the planting plan. And then we have floor plans, which Mark will present to you, and a series of elevations.
Hello. I am Mark Mueller. I'm an architect located in Portland. And thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. And thank you for the Concanons, for letting us be involved in this project. A lot of the notes that I had written for tonight, John has talked about. So I'll probably just have to sort of talk about the building in general. I think basically, as we met with the Concanons early on, they did have some drawings, but they had expressed an interest in a... What I've sort of thought of like a historic, you know, mercantile type of building. And so this is, in my mind, as we've been moving forward, that's how I've sort of been seeing it. And so we've sat and talked quite a bit about, you know, the interior of the building and how it really relates to the outside. A lot of the circulation, a lot of those elements, John had worked out originally. So we were sort of working towards those as a guideline. And so that's sort of what you see here in the bottom... The bottom right-hand drawing. That is the first floor plan. The bottom faces Ocean House Road. So I guess those... That entrance addresses the street. Probably the... On the upper left-hand side, it's probably going to ultimately be more of a main entrance that faces the parking lot. So as you enter there, there's an entry element. There's a porch. This is something that we'd been talking about, you know, kind of after the fact. And that sort of provides for an outdoor patio space for people that are, you know, visiting. The basic plan is a square, which sort of worked out in that it allows, you know, easy access. As spaces get longer and more linear, you know, these people sort of get herded down long lines. So this here, the square, really allows people to move in circles. And there's quite a few different activities in there. There's the rounded horseshoe shape, I guess, is the basic element of the interior, and that's the sandwich, food preparation. The lower right-hand corner is the restaurant coffee shop that John had mentioned. Elsewhere, there'd be, you know, prepared foods, display, et cetera. On the left-hand side... Right-hand side, I'm sorry. That is the kitchen. And so it is off on... You know, faces the high school access. I think the element there is to locate, you know, the commercial aspects of the building away from the residential side of the project. And so there will be an entrance there. Again, we've tried to, you know, address that with, you know, windows and doors and really keep it in conformance with the rest of the building. The second floor is the bottom left-hand drawing. It's pretty straightforward, but it shows, you know, one large open space. There'll be some columns in there. And then Mike had talked about creating dormers on the left-hand side, which faces south, and really helped to address that elevation facing the residential with the interest of dormers. And there's also the low porch in there as well, that really helps to kind of scale down that side of the building and gives it a real strong sense of entry. The upper right-hand drawing is the basement. It's basically just storage. Can we go to the elevations? This is the building elevations, of course. Our main one is the bottom right-hand drawing. That was really the essence of the design. It's basically a simple gable shape. The porches and the kitchens, per se, are dormers that lay on top of that. Um, the porches and the kitchens per se are dormers that, that lay on top of that. I think simplicity was, um, you know, paramount in what we're doing here to work within conformance of the, the village atmosphere. The height of the building is, is twenty-six and a half feet. I've talked to Bruce Smith and he's kind of given us some guidelines on definitions of, um, building height. One, the, um, I guess mostly because this is on a little bit of a slope site. So we're at twenty-six and a half feet. Uh, John gave you some square footages of the building. Basically the footprint is, that we're working with is, is just shy of three thousand square The building materials, um, is basically gonna be horizontal types of siding. Um, we've talked about a, a hardy plank or a cementitious clapboard. So this would be a material that would really have the same essence of, of wood. It would have, um, the benefit of, um, you know, not being wood and, and there's quite a bit of longevity to it as well. And so I think we would look at getting, you know, a pre-finished, uh, horizontal siding. We've talked a little bit about the, the lower banding, the, they'll say the first story is being a little bit wider boards and with a rough finish. And then the upper story would be more of a typical four-inch clapboard, four-inch to weather, um, and, and more of a smooth type finish. The building would be white basically and with probably green windows, I think is what we're thinking initially. And the shutters, either side of the, the main entry element that's supposed to be, I suppose that might sort of resemble an old New England type of barn door per se. However, it has glass and transoms, win, windows in it to, um, and that really becomes the, the entry element off of the main street. Either side of that, they're a little hard to see, but there are some, some panels shown that really become shutters. And so, you know, that would have a, a dark green element to it as well. I think that pretty much covers everything. Are there, are there questions about the building?
I have one quick question. I noticed you've got a circular, that's a counter, I presume, isn't it? On the initial, not this one. The, the view before you had a cer, semi-circular up, this up.
Horseshoe.
It's your floor plan.
On the floor plan.
That, that's the main service counter. That would be, um, you know, there would, that would be where the orders are taken. Um, there would be baked goods for display. That's really the-
The main entrance is, the main entrance is the bottom?
Yes, yeah, in the bottom.
Come in and there's a, okay, it's, you've, you've got a break in the horseshoe. I presume that's the entrance to the horseshoe.
Yeah, that would be for, uh, you know, employees to, to move in and about. Uh, the door in the back there allows access to the kitchen. So that, the kitchen and that, that main counter area are really the, uh, the basis of, of, uh, the space. Everything radiates around it.
I, I have a general question about the interior layout. If it's part of the plan that's submitted, does that mean the applicant can't change it? Or, I mean, it seems like we don't even need necessarily to look at the interior layout.
There are things that we need the interior for, um, and those things couldn't be materially changed. For example, the floor plan gives you a, a, an example, not example, it tells you how many seats there are.
Right.
And seating is crucial for calculating parking.
Yep.
But, you know, if, if the applicant were to come back and they still had the same number of seats and they were gonna change the, the configuration of the interior, I wouldn't see that as triggering planning board review. If they wanted to move the front door someplace, um, or move windows other than the way it looks from the outside, my interpretation would be that that would trigger a planning board review. Typically in these situations, we get floor plans primarily to, to prove to us that what they're proposing the use is really is what they're designing.
Okay, thanks.
It is true that the interior may alter a little bit. Um, you know, we've looked at two or three scenarios on how to best optimize this and I think this is the current one, but things will get adjusted a little bit.
And what did you say that the exterior material was gonna-
Um, it's a, a cementitious siding called hardy plank.
Our, our first issue is completeness and I, I do have one question. Because we're in the town center zone, and this is a question for you, Maureen, as much as anything, we do have design requirements here and the design requirements are not specifically itemized in the materials that have been presented to us. So to me, there's an issue as to completeness, as to whether we can determine from the materials in front of us whether the various design requirements are met. Um, it would be, I think, easier for us and perhaps a request for the next time if you could address them specifically because since we are in the town center, it's, it's a little different on, on the design issues. I guess my sense is that if we go through these plans, we can probably pull out enough material here to address most of those design issues, but they aren't, it's, it's kind of ignored in the materials that are presented to us.
I think if you refer, refer to building materials, they are on the plans.
If I could-
There, there's notes and-
Well, it's true that the applicant hasn't done one, two, three, four, five, six.
Right.
Um, I do check the plans for the information we need to meet the design requirements and consistency with the design requirements. So I haven't found anything in the proposal by the applicant that is, is contrary to the design standards. There are a few design standards where it really is up to the board to decide whether landscaping has been provided that's sufficient for, uh, meeting the standard. But the standards that talk about the maximum size of the building footprint, we, we know the building footprint is like thirty-five hundred and, and the maximum size is five thousand. Uh, there is a front door, there are windows that face the street, um, there is, you, I, you probably haven't given us the roof pitch, but I can look at it and tell you that it's, it's in the area that, that we're talking about. Um, but certainly, you know, if the board wants to ask the applicant in his next iteration to specifically address the individual design standards, you, you could ask for that.
I would like to do that just to establish a precedent that we are taking very seriously the, the specific design standards that are in the town center, almost as we would do fi, formal findings to conclude that in fact it does meet the design requirements. They're, you know, they're compatible with surrounding buildings. It's a difficult thing to get a handle on here, given what surrounds this property. But I do think we need to walk through that procedure just to honor what we've, have written in our zoning ordinance. But I guess my sense is I wouldn't turn down completeness based on that, based on your comment. I don't know if others have comments on that.
Just for my own information, is there a specific requirement to list those standards, one, two, three, four?
Well, it does say the following requirement shall be applicable to all developments which requires site plan review by the planning board. And, and then there is a listing, so it, it, it would seem to me that in the town center, I suppose it, the site plan re, it, it lists them in a different way, but in order for us to be sure that we meet all the requirements that are, are a part of this zone, I would think we would want to have them listed.
Okay.
I, I guess that, it's not that you miss them. I think what the board is asking for is just a, a concise summary of how you've addressed each one.
Yep.
Well, for example, I don't think we have any information about how the scale of this building compares to the scale of any surrounding buildings because we have no information on any surrounding buildings. So we actually don't have that information. We have the scale of this building and we could go out on the street and do our own comparison, but since sca, comparable scale is an express requirement, I think it would be helpful for you to address that. The same thing, the height of the building and the type of roof design, um, is consistent with the streetscape. And so it, it's a little bit different kind of requirement than you would have in a site plan in an area that was not in the town center.
And, and just for the applicant, some of those scale, that scale information, we can lift out of the town center master plan of existing buildings. So it's not like you have to go find a whole bunch of more information.
Anybody else? Um, so I guess we take public comment on completeness. Anyone, any members of the public wish to comment on the issue of completeness? If not, any board members? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Motion for the board to consider, um, motion for completeness. Be it ordered that based on the plans, the materials submitted and the facts presented, the application of KMC LLC for site plan review of Seize Gourmet Market, a new retail office building proposed to be located at three forty-nine Ocean House Road be deemed complete.
Do I have a second? Henry? Okay, any discussion? All in favor? That is one, two, three, four, five of us with Joe abstaining. The next thing for us to consider is whether we want to do a site walk and/or a public hearing.
I think a public hearing would be necessary, but, uh, I don't think the site walk, I personally pass it every day.
I would do a site walk.
You would?
Just to get a feel for the surrounding area and the design requirements and, I mean, I, I could look at it on my own, but, um, I'd like to take a look at the residential house next door.
Yeah.
That would be the reason buffering.
For myself.
My other question is, um, we have a traffic report here. Um, where are we in terms of discussions with the town on the proposed easement? Are you far along in getting the easement that you need from the town for access on and off?
Yes, we are, yeah. Actually, I believe there's a draft in your booklet.
Well, I, I, there is a draft. I just didn't know whether that was your draft or this is something where we, we've made some progress in the town.
The, the town has already granted the concept of the easement and the applicant-
Granted the concept?
That, well, they haven't, they haven't formalized the final language.
Okay.
But they have voted to grant an easement. The applicant has paid for the easement.
Okay.
And their vote was just to submit a document that meets the standards of the town attorney and the manager can sign it. The applicant has prepared that document. The town attorney has reviewed it and provided comments. And presumably the applicant is revising the draft to meet the town attorney's comments. The board can always, if you get to the point that you are willing to consider a motion for approval of the project, you can still make it a condition that they can't do anything with the approval until the easement has been provided in a form acceptable to the town attorney. So I guess we're, I, my impression is we're in the I dotting and T crossing stage.
Okay. And in, in terms of the traffic study, has that been part of the discussion with the town council in terms of the adequacy of that road to meet the anticipated traffic? And, because I would anticipate that would be an issue for the public because of the traffic backups we already have at the high school.
I was not at the meeting where the council discussed this with the applicant, but they did agree to grant an easement. And so my presumption is they consider traffic impacts.
Okay. Is that, that's something else I was thinking about. We would wanna take a look at, at the site walk and certainly be prepared.
I wanna qualify that. I do remember at, at that discussion that just because the council has decided that as a property owner, they're willing to grant an easement over their property, that doesn't preclude the planning board from its responsibilities to make sure that the traffic meets the site plan standards.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
And I could see people cutting through the parking lot if they have a hard time turning out to the road.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Something I would think we would wanna address with a site walk to see just how it's gonna work and how it would relate to the property and, and all of that. So should we see about scheduling?
Notice one thing on, on, on the plan, that if you're coming out of there and you're turning left to go past down towards, you're gonna be in a one, on a turn-left lane section of, of seventy-seven. So you have to come over, take a left, and then pull over to the right.
Yeah, we'll have to take a look. Okay, timing-wise for-
You've gotta do weekends, it's getting, unless you, I mean, it's getting dark at six o'clock now.
Okay.
So unless you're, you're available at five PM on a weekday, I think you've gotta look at a weekend site walk.
What do people think? Is five PM on a weekday work?
Any day works for me.
Carol, between five PM and weekday, what would it face? Mostly.
Can I go on the sidewalk if I don't say anything?
Yes. Are there some days that don't, uh, could you propose a day that does work for you?
Uh, Monday, Tuesday, Friday, Sunday.
Oh, yeah, Monday, Tuesday, Fridays.
Next week? Not, obviously not this week.
Yep. Next week being, what are the dates next week?
Twenty-second, twenty-third.
I could do Monday or Tuesday next week.
Tuesday's better.
How about next Tuesday at five o'clock? Can you do a site walk?
You don't wanna do it a little earlier? It gets dark at six. Are you gonna use the whole hour or are you gonna let less than an hour?
I could do earlier, I don't know about others.
Earlier would be harder. Earlier would be more difficult.
I think I can do Tuesday. You were saying Monday, Tuesday, or Friday?
Yeah, next Friday doesn't work for me.
Okay, a week from Friday does not work.
It's, I believe, the twenty-third.
Yeah, I'm just thinking.
It is, it is definitely the twenty-third.
Yes, it is, Tuesday's the twenty-third.
Okay, so if that works for you.
What time?
Four-thirty? We do four-thirty?
Fine for me.
Can you make it?
It'd be easier to make it at five.
All right, we'll do it at five and we'll be efficient. That's the twenty-third? Yes. Um, as long as we're talking about a site walk, I just wanted to mention, um, the rules for a site walk. And we are addressing at that time only physical questions about the site. Um, and any discussion of related issues really has to wait until we're in a public meeting, although a site walk is open to the public. It is not a public meeting for discussion purposes. So we all need to stay together, um, all be asking one question at a time so we can all hear the responses. But then discussion of issues or things we might like to see on a plan, um, really is not supposed to occur at the site walk. Have I summarized that effectively?
So if, for example, you have a question about something that would affect the use or make it difficult to use, reserve it for the meeting rather than at the site walk?
For example, you can say, "Do you intend to keep this tree? Yes or no?" But you cannot then go forward and say, "Gee, if you kept that tree, it might help the next-door property."
Okay.
And ask a question, you can ask a question.
As it relates-
What, what do, what will this facade be as it relates to the next-door neighbor to get the facts, but not then discuss the pros and cons of the decision?
Okay, clean, I follow.
Would you add anything to that, Maureen?
No, I think that was, I, I mean, it's, it's like fact-finding.
Yeah.
And any, the public is welcome to come and anyone who happens to be listening, the, the public also needs to respect those rules. It is not a discussion time, it is not a time for members of the, of the public to engage in discussion with the applicant. Again, that is supposed to be occurring at a public meeting and there will be plenty opportunity to do that. Okay, in that case, um, we can have discussion now if we want to or just table this for the next meeting after the site walk and schedule a public hearing.
Would you want to discuss that? Pull out, except it, it pulls out into a, uh, the layout says when you come out of the parking lot and you want to turn left towards Portland, we're going to be in Route seventy-seven with the turn left only. So you come out of here, into, into this, there's gonna be an entrance in here. I noticed it was a footpath only, uh, shown. I know, I thought it was shown and there was a footpath. That's why I was looking.
Go over, go over access points again?
This one here.
Review the access points?
Yeah. And I'm gonna try to not, I think the intent, the expectation is, and the applicant will have to convince the board that this is the expectation, is that when people are exiting the property and they wanna head north, that they will, uh, choose to exit into the high school driveway because that will guarantee them a signalized intersection onto Route seventy-seven versus trying to cut into traffic independently to make a left turn-
Right.
-onto seventy-seven from the main entrance.
Would make more sense, I agree. If they know-
Do we, do we have the right to make it right turn only?
The board could, the board could discuss that. I, you know, I think you can look to the applicant and give them direction that you really are expecting at the next meeting, for them to be prepared to talk about options on how traffic moves and circulates through the site. What are the advantages of things like if you're exiting the site directly on Route 77, making it a right turn only? Looking at any concerns about cut-through traffic from the high school drive? If you give the applicant some heads up on that, perhaps he'll be able to come back at the next meeting with your answers.
Yeah. I mean, I think Maureen just perfectly articulated my concerns, which is cut-through traffic in both directions, really, and left turn onto 77.
There is no left turn out onto the high school driveway, is that correct?
Yes, there is. We're proposing a two-way, right turn and left turn, a full...
You can turn left onto the high school access road?
Yes.
Oh.
Yes.
And you can turn left or right out of either entrance, is your proposal?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I thought at some point I had read that you would not be able to turn left.
An earlier proposal.
An earlier proposal.
Yeah.
Okay.
You didn't imagine it.
Okay.
It's, you know, it's anticipated that a fair number of customers will be students and/or staff coming in in the morning. They'll, they'll enter the site at the primary access, park, go in and come out, and then exit here, exit at the secondary drive and take a left. I want to note that the traffic study included a queuing analysis. And when they did the traffic study, they did traffic counts on-site, both AM and PM peak hours.
Right.
And it was during the high school season. They've also inflated their, their numbers to coincide with the month of August. So they've, they've factored that in, the peak hours of Ocean House Road.
I guess what I'm thinking about is, in the morning, you're going to have lots of people turning left from Route 77 into the high school drive. And when that traffic light finishes, you're going to have lots of people turning right from Route 77 into the high school drive. So for some significant period in the morning, there is essentially no break in traffic that would allow someone exiting from the restaurant to turn left onto the high school driveway. It's, it's kind of a constant traffic flow, and I'm just not clear that the traffic analysis really, the traffic analysis does not specifically address that, but I can, I can certainly anticipate a backup there and not a window of opportunity for a young high school driver to turn left safely onto the high school access road.
Well, again, they have the option. They have the option of either turning left or exiting the primary access, turn left onto Ocean House Road, go to the signal and make another movement.
Right, and they're in the same, they're in the same traffic backup from all the traffic coming up 77, trying to turn left into the high school. I wonder if the person who did the traffic analysis might be able to talk to us a little more about that, because to me, that's, you know, it's only for short periods of the day, but it is the periods which might be the busiest, both through the high school and for the restaurant, if they're giving breakfast items to students.
Okay, I'll talk, it was Tom Gorl.
That would be helpful to have him at the sidewalk.
At the sidewalk?
Actually, I don't think we can have that discussion at the sidewalk, can we?
If we're fact-finding physical features...
Yeah, I think we'll have to have him here in the, at the meeting if we want to have a discussion. And I also anticipate that there'll be lots of members of the public that might have that concern, because they wait in those lines in the morning. So if he were here to address those questions, I think it would be helpful.
My, I have a concern. It's the approval standard, Section 19-9-5. I brought it up before, and I can't remember what the answer was, but it's under Traffic Access and Parking, and access to Site Number 2D, it says, "No part of any driveway shall be located within a minimum of 10 feet of a side property line."
The parking?
Yeah, "No part of any driveway shall be located within a minimum of 10 feet of a side prop..."
Right.
So...
So this is 10 feet here.
Okay.
And we've added a buffer.
Okay.
We have actually, right now, the edge of this, the existing entry drive is right on the corner of the property. We've moved it five feet away.
Okay.
So it's grand, it's grand property?
It's five feet.
That's the way we've treated it.
Yeah. And so would that require a variance, like a zoning variance, or?
We've treated it, in the past, we've treated those, it's an existing condition.
Ah, okay. I mean, I understand why you want it at that bottom corner of the property.
It would be like a legal, non-conforming driveway.
Okay.
And you can't make it more non-conforming by moving it closer to the property line.
Okay.
When I was reading over the plan, I, I was trying to look for certain features on your plan, and one of the things I had a hard time finding was where the service area was, where the trucks would come in. And I know now from hearing you, but I was wondering if you could just maybe possibly label that on the plan?
Sure.
So that's clear? And I, I don't know, is there any standard for making sure nobody parks in that area? Do you stripe it?
Would it be what?
Making sure no one parks in the area? Do you stripe it? Do you put a sign up?
There probably will be a sign that identifies it as service. It's a 12-foot aisle, 12-foot drive. Well, we can, we can sign it, yeah.
I was also wondering, where is your snow storage location? Where will you be pushing?
Yeah, we've addressed that in the booklet. Snow storage will be, you know, during a light-to-normal storm, it will be stored around the perimeter of the parking and drives. During real heavy storms, we would anticipate removing the snow offsite.
And we have been addressing the main entrance, and as we continue to address that and with the different signs that could be there, when I first thought it was a two-way and that's how it would remain, I was looking for like a stop sign or something, and I didn't originally see it.
There, there is a stop sign shown on the site plan right here.
That, oh, I thought the main entrance.
Oh, at the main entrance?
Yes.
We do not have a stop sign.
But I know now that it's going to be up for discussion. It could be a sign now that says right only, but, but I wasn't sure, should there be a stop sign at that point also? So...
There isn't at the IGA.
I'll...
Okay.
What's that?
I said, "There isn't one at the IGA."
No.
So Carol Ann does not stop.
Shopping Pleasant.
Right. She just blows right through there. Okay, just for consideration.
But I've, I've yet to see someone not stop there.
And was the lighting all within the foot candle limits on sheet number nine? I thought I saw a couple of them outside of the limit.
Well, I believe the standard is no more than a half a foot candle. And most of, most of the levels along that property line are either 0 or .1 or .2, I believe is the highest.
Let me just look at sheet nine, refresh my memory. I think there's one spot where it's .6, but I think, Victoria, a street light, existing street light is contributing to that.
Is there? Because I'm looking at 1.1 and .07.
Yeah.
But that's, you think that's an existing?
Yeah, I, I've been looking at it, and I'll, I'll check it again, but, I mean, I can't, I don't feel like we can hold them to .5 if that's, there's a town street light there.
Okay, I did not.
But I will, we'll double-check that.
Okay.
That was it.
Anybody else? Carol Ann?
I'll ask the question this time. Have you addressed all the AMAC comments?
We have. We've addressed all of them, and the plans have been revised. There's only one that I have a question mark on, item number 14. And I've got to get back to AMAC to have them clarify that, because Detail 10 and Detail 1 on sheet 4, it just doesn't match up. So there is something there that I need to have clarified.
Would someone like to make a motion for tabling and public hearing? Carol Ann?
Motion for tabling and public hearing. Be it ordered that, based on the plans and materials submitted and the facts presented, the application of KMC LLC for site plan review of Seize Gourmet Market, a new retail office building to be located at 349 Ocean House Road, be tabled to the regular November 20, 2012, meeting of the Planning Board, at which time a public hearing will be held.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Victoria, second? Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, that's five in favor and Joe abstaining. All right. Thank you very much. We'll see you at the sidewalk. All right, we have one more. So Maureen, you want, again, the sidewalk is October 23rd, I think?
Yes.
At 5:00 p.m. Tuesday, October, and we will meet just right at, on the site.
Yeah. I'll send an email reminder, and I'll also put it on the town's website calendar, so you can check that as well.
Okay.
And the public can check there as well.
Great. So our other business on the agenda, our last item, survey zoning amendment. The town council has forwarded to the Planning Board a request to review an amendment to the zoning ordinance that would require a standard boundary survey for structures within five feet of a setback line, Section 191013 zoning ordinance amendments. And we have a memorandum here that is also posted online that I think explains the need for this provision. Would anyone like to raise any questions or discuss the proposal? I don't see any members of the public here anymore, so we won't have a public comment period, but we are required to have a public hearing, and that would be at our next meeting. So if there are members of the public who would like to comment, you will have the opportunity. Anyone on the board have any comments or discussion? Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'm not for it, but I'm in the minority.
Anyone else? Anyone want to make a motion?
Sure.
Carol Ann?
Motion for the board to consider, be it ordered that, based on the draft amendment and the facts presented, the Planning Board tables the draft survey amendments to the regular November 20, 2012, meeting of the Planning Board, at which time a public hearing will be held.
Do I have a second? Victoria, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? That's unanimous, all of us. Thank you. That's the last item on our agenda, so a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All right. All in favor? We stand adjourned. Thank you.